Welcome to our largest planning series for February, our three-month. And for this week, we have a panel from 1989 New York City Planning Commission. The title of the panel is called "Power" and I'm very excited to hear that. And with that, I am going to pass it to Wei Ping, who will be moderating our panel. A long way to go.
You have an awesome speaker.
Your system looks fantastic.
Oh, sorry. Thanks, Wei. This is really quite an occasion and to have all of them sitting together. Anyway, I wanted to welcome you all. Many of you know some of the panels and if you don't, so I'm going to introduce really quickly. And also want to thank those of you who come a long way to join us today. So this idea was first tossed around by Maxine and Jeanie, and we thought it was great, right? So things have changed, things have not changed, but any place with history. And so we thought we'd use this to look at the work of this planning commission, which was, you will see later, quite tremendous. And so, and also to reflect a little bit, you know, on the future of planning, perhaps at least in New York City, perhaps even in a larger context. And we'll conduct this more like a panel, so if you have a question, really feel free to raise as we go about asking the panelists. So first one, introduce first, all the way to my right, is James Chow. He is chairman and CEO, Long Island Group, and JAO Design International Limited. I think it was great, just J-A-O.
Just outstanding design.
Just outstanding design, right.
Yes, J-A-O D.
And then next to James is Professor Eugenie Birch. We're very pleased to have you back. Jeanie graduated from the PSC program here.
A few years ago.
And Jeanie is also the Lawrence Master of Urban Research at U Penn and co-director at Pagni Institute for Urban Research. And it's been a really great leader of the planning academic field in addition to practice. And next to Jeanie is Maxine. A lot of you know Maxine, Maxine Griffin, who is a faculty here as well and has been the first senior vice president at Columbia, now senior advisor to the president of Columbia University before that, lots of other accomplishments. And really great to have you. And then we have Mr. and Professor Ron Schiffman, Professor of Urban Planning, lab center for planning at Pratt Institute, and also a very active activist in New York. I just learned a little bit earlier. And then we have Dr. Woodward, a veteran of planning in New York City, and also our veteran of faculty of the program. And so really wonderful to have all of them. And I'm Wei Ping, who is the director of the master program here at Columbia. So maybe what we get started is that we've heard a lot about accomplishment of the commission. And perhaps, Jeanie, you can help us sort of scope that and just set the scene in terms of what the commission has accomplished, and especially the key projects, then we'll move on to some other questions.
Sure. Actually, I want to talk a little bit, and Ron's going to help me. What the world was like in 1989 and 90 when we all sat on the Planning Commission. And I think you have to realize that New York was large. It had 322 square miles, which it still has, but it had a much smaller population, 7.3 million. We're now much more than that. In terms of mobility, we had 3.3 million people coming into the city every day over just a few and the same basically ways that we do today. And we had 300,000 trucks coming in trying to bring in goods and services that we had. Our CBD was basically, remember, it's 1989, we had two CBDs basically in Manhattan, we had Lower Manhattan and we had Midtown Manhattan. Some 760,000 people were working in a very constrained area. We had 300,000 manufacturing jobs at that time. It was down to a million, but we still had 300,000. I'm not sure how many, Ron, you can help us with that, how many we have today. We had 2.9 million dwelling units, but costs were going up. Housing affordability was really an issue then. Our costs here in the city were going up much faster than in the nation. Homelessness is an issue. Many of the same issues we're confronting today. And services, services, I mean, just a miracle how New York works. Imagine, right then, New York was delivering 1.5 million gallons of water a day and countless garbage, countless other kinds of services. I mean, it was a really incredible machine. And so there had been talk about the need to change the governance of New York City. At the time, prior to 1989, New York had a city government that was made up of something called a Board of Estimate. And the Board of Estimate were representatives from the boroughs. And some smart person went to the courts and said, hey, wait a minute, there's equal representation of every borough on the Board of Estimate. That's not fair, because we have 1.2 million people living in Manhattan, we have half a million living in Staten Island, and they all have the same representation. Can't do this. So that Board of Estimate was declared unconstitutional and a charter commission, the commission started studying the situation and came up with a new form of government. And that new, we became part of that new form of government.
Well, actually, I was part of the old form and the new form, since I was the land use person for the borough president and wrote a brief against the change and then enjoyed it.
Right. Good point, good point. At any rate, we did have borough presidents, we did have the Board of Estimate, we did have a small city council. And what changed basically was the Board of Estimate was eliminated, the city council was grown, 51 representatives, and the city plan, and different kinds of rulings were created for different functions in the city, but the city, the land use functions were vastly changed. And the commission, the planning commission, was made an agent of some of these changes. And moved from having seven people, all appointed by the mayor, to 13 people, appointed by borough presidents, the head of city council, and by the mayor. The mayor had the majority. And there were new functions that we needed to engage in at that time. Not only were we enlarged, but there were some basic mandated reports and rulings that we had to come up with. And we can all talk about that, the fair share criteria, thinking about how public investments would be allocated throughout the, throughout the city itself, a capital budget we had to look at, we had to think more about historic landmark preservation designations, the EULAR process, which I hope you masters candidates know all about EULAR, was given a time constraint before it was untimed, and a number of things such as that. Oh, and we also regarded, and I'm not sure what's happened to this, the 197A plans were meant to be reviewed by us. And that was interesting because of the curious legal position they had. Well, this was the commission. We had a retreat, this was taken, the picture taken of all of us there. You can see James, you can see Ron, you can see Max, and you can see everybody's name here at the bottom, where they came from and so forth. We don't know where they came from. Tony Jacoby came from Staten Island, Max, you came from the borough president.
I came from, I was the mayor.
The mayor by the time. Ron, you were a mayor. Jim, you were a mayor. I was a mayor. Joel was Queens. Richard Schaefer was chair of the.
Tony Jacoby was Staten Island.
Yeah. Schaefer was the director of the department plus the chair. Brenda Lemen was Manhattan Borough President. Jacob Ward was Bronx. Victor Alessia.
Mayor.
Mayor. Ed Rogowski, Brooklyn.
Brooklyn.
Amanda was city council. And Deborah was mayor, right? Okay, okay, there we go. So those were the appointments, that's who they all are, and we'll look where they are later.
Right. Just one thing about the Columbia connections. So two faculty members were involved in the appointment of the commission, and one was chair of the commission. So our former dean at GSAP, Richard Schaefer, was the chair of the City Planning Commission. And a former faculty member from SEPA, Mary Dinkins, was the mayor.
Right, exactly.
And of course Amanda was also a.
Of course, and Amanda was a graduate of the program.
That's right. She got her masters here. All right, so this is a EULAR situation, 59 community boards. The community boards were given much more power as for the borough presidents and the City Planning Commission was given the power that if it turned something down, that was it. That was the end, which was an extraordinary power to have at that time. That was, did not exist before. We can talk about how that was avoided, but that was.
And thus the title of the panel.
Yes, exactly. And so a number of the things that were instituted in that charter still exist today, others don't. But the fair share criteria is still existent. They have been amended since the time we passed them, but they are amended and used. But capital strategy is still in place. 197A plans, I want you all to talk about what's happened in their place, but that's not, that's discussed in 2009.
Not particularly effective.
And citywide statement of needs is required, the mayor to give that report, or the planning deal with that report, and that would feed into the capital budget. And of course, the zoning resolution was the center of much of our work as we were discussing before. I just wanted to quickly talk about some of the cases we had to deal with. Here was the National Tennis Center. We had a mayor who liked tennis, among other things. But the real question was, would this sport, which was known in New York as a world, you know, you think about what a world city has, and it's very unique things. One of them was the fact we had these tennis championships. And the question was, they needed to expand. How would this happen? And we went through many discussions, as how this should happen, and also share the benefits of having such a center with the community. And so we came up with a number of ideas there. And also, when it took up more land in a park, how are we going to replace that land, park land? And we came up with a solution there. The area basin was a question of delivering city services, to create a police.
Police and power.
Zone there. And this was pretty tricky in this particular area as well, lots of negotiations about what kind of community benefits would occur by doing that. Riverside South.
Boy. We could have stopped the fucker.
I think we're the only women in this room that have a kiss from that guy right here.
I know. And didn't your daughter answer the phone?
At any rate, 23 acre site, this was really contentious, and we can talk more about that. And at the other end of the scale, we were dealing with how you dealt with homelessness. And this was a woman sheltered in New Project's housing, what the neighborhood thought of that. So we had many, many discussions, many projects of full range in all the different boroughs, all the different scales of things. It was really an extraordinary time. And it was an extraordinary time for this group on the board, because the discussions were really fantastic. And as we look at, when I reflected on this experience, I wrote an article for the APA Journal, which I tell all doctoral students, you have, if you have an experience like this, you have to turn it into something. You can't just be a practitioner, you have to learn from it and try and put forward the learnings from that. At any rate, my thesis of this was that democratic planning really did occur under the charter revision. And I was looking at what happened in the EULAR process with regard to how, whether citizens were able to change things or not. They never were able to stop a project, I would say, but they were able to shape a project. And that was very, very important, that shaping that happened at these various stages of the EULAR activity. And it was always inclusive, all 59 boards were involved, and citizen participation was demonstrable to all of the political leaders as you went along. And that was really important in terms of shaping decisions. So I think it was a pretty exciting time, and it still is an exciting time to be involved in planning. So what happened to them? Where are they now? And so Victor Alessia, President Ruka, Amanda is from Bloomberg Philanthropies, Tony was a New York Supreme Court Justice, he's since retired, Maxine is right here, James is here, Brenda's a land use consultant. I'd say Brenda probably knew the land use better than anybody in this group. Joel Millie died, Ed Rogowski died, Ron Schiffman is here.
Not because they were on the planning.
No, they had very distinguished careers. Joel went on to be head of the buildings department, and Ed was a faculty at Brooklyn College and a quite very important spokesman for this work. Ron is here. Robert Schaefer was a former president of Green Tree Foundation. Jacob Ward, I don't know what happened to him. He was a good deal older than you.
He was my age then, so.
Yes, yes.
He's passed.
Oh, he has passed, okay. And Deborah Wright is now managing director at the Rockefeller Foundation. So we've all kind of kept going.
We're not in the screen.
If I could, I think it's important to understand the context in which we took over. Because 1989, we saw the fall of the Iron Curtain in Eastern Europe. And so the wall in Berlin came down. In 1990, we saw Nelson Mandela being released in South Africa. And as a result, we saw the emergence of a new South Africa. We came out in New York out of a period of time where we were thinking about planned shrinkage as the future for the city. Because planners tend to sometimes look at data and project it in a straight line into the future, never understanding there can be an inflection and a change in the direction that goes. So we were, there were people advocating that we abandon certain parts of the city, we protect other parts of the city, and we invest in only some limited areas. That whole idea of planned shrinkage fell to the wayside. We began, as was mentioned, we saw a great deal of deindustrialization of the city, but we were coming down to the bare bones, that we needed to have some form of manufacturing in order to protect some of our vital industries, or vital functions. We needed people to frame the artwork going into the museums. We needed to do set design for some of the new industries that were coming up in the city of New York. The film industry is basically a building industry within the filming industry itself. So we began to see a lot of those things emerge. 1987, two years before our commission, the UN released the Brundtland Report. And we began understanding in 198, right around that time, about the whole issue of sustainable development and the impact of climate change. 1992 was a year in which the UN began to argue that we needed to really address climate change. We were making those decisions about how the future of the city within that context. New York City was also emerging, as I mentioned just briefly before, from this planned shrinkage period, but we were shrinking as a city. We were in the late 60s and into the 70s, losing between 30,000 to 36,000 units a year. That's about a five-family building, about three or four or five family buildings a day being abandoned in the city. By abandonment, we meant people were leaving behind their ownership of those buildings, some were occupied. So we were sitting, we were suffering from a period of economic withdrawal. The banks weren't investing in the city, and the victims of that lack of investment, of disinvestment, were poor people. Today, what many of you are confronting is, I think, the success of our period and the problems of your period, which is displacement and overinvestment, with a great deal of people now being displaced because of overinvestment. So we've seen a complete change, but that was the framework. And so when you hear what we talk about, understanding it was a different time and a different set of challenges.
That's, that's an extraordinary rendition. It's just, and I can remember as staff to these guys at City Planning during the 90s, just being overwhelmed by the number of things we were doing. We were doing new plans for Long Island City, for waterfront zoning. We had started to work on something called Unified Bulk, which was a way of getting, you know, all of the buildings in the city to actually function through zoning the way we thought they should. I mean, there are too many kinds of rules in the city as it is. And also, there was an enormous growth in the zoning resolution itself. So one of the things that I wanted to ask, and I've been meaning to ask this for years, what was the view on the commission of the often repeated suggestion that the zoning resolution be completely revamped? It was done in 1916, as those of you who've taken Pernama and my course on zoning know, 1916, 1961 were sort of the major events, 1975 as well, in terms of the zoning resolution. But why have we not been able to shorten it or to revamp it?
EIS? EIS, but also there are a lot of vested interests. There are whole firms whose work is nothing but dealing with the code as it is. They would go out of business if it were completely revamped.
Land use attorneys.
Land use attorneys, even some urban planners working in the private sector, believe it or not, folks who work on EISs. But also, I'd like to shift the question a little bit.
Do talk about the EIS, because that really was the block.
Yes, I will.
It was too expensive, you couldn't do it.
But I also want to, you can do that, Jeanie. But I also want to go to what I think is the real underlying question, which is planning through zoning instead of planning through planning. So my personal feeling when I was on the commission is it would be nice to actually have a planning commission that looked at things comprehensively with zoning only as a tool. So to me, simply revamping the zoning text and map would have been somewhat disingenuous, because it seems to me the real goal should have been developing a comprehensive planning protocol, the same way it is in every other major city in the US. I just want to bring James into it for a minute. Some of you know I do some work in China. I do some work in China because of this gentleman. We met on the Planning Commission, and he invited me to do some work with him. But the reason I like working in China is, in China, you actually plan. And the planner is involved from the inception through to the end of the project. And the end of the project actually looks like a thoughtful, comprehensive plan. And you may argue with the political structure, you know, a lot. But still, the US seems to me as one of the few countries in the world where planners, even though we've got more power from 89 to 90, less power than most planners around the world.
Interesting. And also, you should, you should know too, that the Planning Commission, one of the changes that happened was that the Planning Commission was increased from seven members, you know, appointed by the mayor, to 13 members that were appointed by the mayor, still in the majority, but then also by the borough presidents and the city council, the public advocate. So, I mean, there are, you know, significant changes happening at this time on the commission that made it more broad-based. Now, but it's interesting that you all were mayoral appointments, but very different sort of ideologically. How did that work? How did these appointments come about? It would be interesting to know, I think.
Magic.
Magic, okay. Who's magic?
But one thing that did happen, I think you noticed if you go through the list before and after 89, is that more actual planners were on the Planning Commission, including academic planners.
And an architect.
And it, well, there was always.
I was the only architect, maybe the first architect.
There was always an architect.
No, you were the second one.
Yeah, but there was always an architect. But I think the individual decisions made by the appointing entities, I think they decided, this is the first time out, this is going to be important, we're going to make a lot of rules and regulations as a planning commission, why not bring on planners? And that was not the case up to then, it was mostly attorneys or community activists.
I want to go back to the zoning resolution, because I was appointed as the first Asian American, also the architect, and I do a lot of zoning practice. At the time, my father was in Queens, we were the specialized in zoning. So I think it was very difficult, we did talk about zoning revamp, it's very difficult, like Maxine said, it would be cutting away a lot of special interest groups who really drive on the zoning. Plus, it's the other side of the issue, it's always better to know with the devil, you know, better, you know, because when you try to change, for example, the tax code, even, there's even more problem. I think zoning, New York City zoning is fine the way it is. People can always find around a way to increase their FAL. I want to say serving the Planning Commission was a big life changer for me, and I was the architects, actually, I got the endorsement by the Architectural Association. I think we have collected about 3,000 architects, because I was actually running an office doing a lot of new buildings in Queens. So if you go back to the Dodge Report back in 1988, 89, 30% of new buildings in Queens were built by James Charles Associates. The other thing was the, being the first Asian American, also second youngest member next to Debbie. Debbie was six months younger than I was.
Okay, we can just keep moving.
That's right. I think the representation of Asian was also very important, that I was able to, with the assistance of Jeanie, and we did the Chinatown study, not with the city budget, but Chinatown has always been enclave where people just ignore the planning for the area. So that's why you have a lot of dirty streets, it's difficult to serve. So I was fortunate that when Jeanie was teaching at Hunters, were able to mobilize a lot of graduate students, and while we did the semester study, and we actually published with the Chinatown Study Group.
An APA prize.
Yeah, APA prize, I did all that, it was great.
Oh, so did fair share.
Yeah.
Well, we should talk about the power dynamics of this new enlarged commission. I think it would be interesting, because we had seven mayoral people, and then six from different places as they were appointed. And there was a great desire on the commission not to have a split vote, because we wanted the city council to adhere to our decisions. And so we did a lot of negotiation behind the scenes to come up with the compromises, so that I don't think we ever had a vote, maybe one or two that was split, that.
I was a dissenting on a.
Yeah, but not enough to get the city council out of.
No, no.
Which is what we want, remember 51 members.
And to your point, I don't ever remember the conversation splitting around, oh, I'm a mayoral appointee, you're a borough president appointee. I think we glumped more into left, right, center, perhaps, in our, in our approach. There are a couple of times when Tony Jacoby, who sat next to me, because I was a G and he was a G.
He sat alphabetically.
He sat alphabetically. And there was a Staten Island matter, he was from Staten Island, he would lean over and say.
I need this.
Maxine, I think you need to vote for this one. I don't know what that meant. But, you know, and often it was said in jest, but that was the kind of conversation. But we didn't, when we came together, say, well, Queens wants it this way.
Fair substitute.
Another thing that happened that first year is we went around and actually had meetings in the boroughs. And we tried to do that on an ongoing basis, didn't quite, quite work. But I really didn't know anything about Staten Island, and very little about Queens. We went, these were open meetings, and we also had dinner afterwards. The commissioner from that borough would choose a place to eat, and we would eat and talk about the borough issues. It, something like eating together, and drinking together.
Well, the reason we were going to the boroughs was to deal with the fair share criteria. And as you remember, every borough said, we have too much of this, we don't need any of this, you know? We have more than our fair share. And so we had to negotiate how to think about what fair share meant. And we were really tied by the law that wouldn't let us think across categories. We had to think of a fair share for homeless shelters, a fair share for sewage treatment plants, and so forth, which was quite annoying, that the law bound us into these strict.
But Jeanie kept us on track. I mean, seriously.
No, actually, we want to bring Bill, who is recognized in the audience, who is the council and the vice of the Planning Commission. Bill is our chief counsel, and he really advises which line.
Stand up and re-recognize.
Yeah.
Some of us didn't listen to Bill.
And Pernama, since you're sitting there, you stand up.
She was also with you. Taking your head.
Because I think the staff, I think also the staff of the Planning Commission at the time was one of the probably the best people we had worked with. They're very able to come out with the criteria, so we would have a very candid, open discussion, not leaning to a white side. So everybody's looking at the issue by the fact itself, rather than any kind of politician coming to twist our arms. I remember maybe Donald Trump was the, one of the applicant for the Trump world power.
That was 10 stage sound.
Riverside.
Riverside, yeah. No, no, he also came in for the power, so then.
Riverside sound.
Yeah, we all remember that.
I do want to go back to your question, though. I do think there was a major push to try to get things that were as of right, so that, because the city was really worried about how we create development, not obstacles to development. So a lot of the zoning, once it was agreed upon, you could begin to get an as-of-right procedure and process underway. I think I fully agree with, you know, the idea of that the commission is now and then focused primarily on zoning, and that we really need to go back to planning. And that was really a fundamental flaw at that time, it continues to be a flaw today. We use the environmental impact analysis as a way, an excuse not to go there. I don't, I think we can do it with or without the environmental analyses. They should be coming and they should be part of the process, and they should be at the end, at the beginning of the pipe, not at the end of the pipe. Because what we do is we develop a plan, we develop, you do the entire development scheme, and then at the end, you evaluate its environmental impact, rather than using environment as a fundamental way of writing the program for the plan.
Right, and not for as-of-right development.
But I'd like to.
And that means there's slightly different versions. And it was to David Dinkins' credit, and I think we really need to, he appointed to the commission a variety of commissioners who had different backgrounds. While we all were physical planners, we all came with a different political slant. He appointed me, and I think I got the one-year appointment first, because he wanted to make sure.
I got five.
He got five, because he knew her. And I was. And I, I was reappointed. But, the issue was that he came to me and said, you've always been arguing against the city, or, you know, fighting on behalf of neighborhoods. I was an advocate, I come from the theory of planning of advocacy planning, not Solomonski, but Paul Davidoff. And basically, the idea that there are certain people in the city that are never represented by planners. The people who don't have the resources, who have been excluded, and we've decided that we would provide our expertise to low and moderate income groups so their voice could be heard in the planning process.
Ron, I want to talk about how you snuck in something. Can I talk about how you snuck something in, as a planner?
You got a map.
Let me tell you. One of the things that we had to do was, was Department of Real Property, whatever it's called now, would come in with stacks of property and want us to approve their sale. And they'd be totally unrelated, there'd be a little stack this high of lots. And Ron, to his credit, said, hey, we're gonna stop this. We are not going to approve any more of these sales unless you come back with lots of assemblages and turn these into plans. So you work within the structure to bring planning. And your argument was how often poor people bought these pieces of land and they ended up on the auction block again and again. So I think that, you know-
But I always worked within the system.
No, 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 what I'm trying to say is that there were, even though you're saying there's no planning done, I think with the right kind of intelligence, which Ron had, you can insert planning within a structure that's not very favorable to it.
But one point I wanted to make is that what David did tell me, he said, I don't care how you vote, but never surprise me. Never surprise me. So when I opposed, felt I had to oppose something, I would let Schaefer know, or someone in City Hall understand that I could not live with that vote and I would vote against it. And he never held that against me. And it was really, I think, to his credit, that he wanted that kind of diversity.
So long as he had the votes.
Well, yeah, I could say a story about that, I don't know if you remember this, but, and I don't remember the issue, but I was about to vote against something, and I told, Richard, I told the chair. And he said, no, no, I don't want you to, to vote against it. He said, the mayor doesn't want you to vote against this. So, of course, I'd worked with the mayor for four years, I picked up the phone and he said, no, you do what you want to do. So, I came time to vote, and I thought I had a pretty well-done statement. And I didn't mention the mayor, and Richard got up and said, Commissioner Griffith is flaunting her relationship with the mayor of this city. Well, of course, after that, everybody wanted to talk to me. Because they felt-
I thought you got appointment include being a leader.
Oh, yeah. That was, that was it. But also, basi- you know, talking about what you mentioned with regard to poor people, one of the things you have to understand about that era is the city owned about sixty-five percent of Harlem. So, at that point, we were giving away, H P D was giving away buildings for a dollar. We were begging for people to come into the city. As, as Ron said, you guys are dealing with the success of that situation. And I know, because we met, some of the Ph.D. students are working on issues of gentrification, the person who comes up with the formula about how to have appropriate development without tipping over into gentrification is going to get every prize possible. Because everybody wants to be able to drink their vanilla latte at the Starbucks, everybody wants their snows cloud, everybody wants the amenities that come with development, but nobody wants to be pushed out of their home. And is there a way of calculating, of developing an algorithm that planners can follow to get to that point? That would be fantastic. We are perhaps on slightly different ends of the spectrum, but I think that's-
I always sit to the left of her.
Yeah, but that's to the, but, but I think that objective, that mission, is one that we both share.
You know, the one ninety-seven A plan that had a lot of impact was, I think, the first one that we approved, and that was for the South Bronx. I think it was Community Board Four. Because that was done by a group, it was led by Harry DiRienzo and Banana Kelly in the Bronx. And it came forward, and for the first time, it challenged the city's policy of suburbanizing urban areas. They said the density being proposed by the city was too low. And that, in a way, set a framework of one of the issues that we have to confront today, is that for a period of time, we were building one and two-family houses, where we should have been building at a higher density. And it actually looked at the future in a way, how do you look at a community? What is its infrastructure? What's the carrying capacity of that infrastructure and planned around that? And what would be our goal? And I, I think that one ninety-seven A plan, till today, has had its repercussions.
But that was another example, again, you have a lot of leadership in this, in calling that. Because it wasn't just the one ninety-seven A plan, there were different zoning, things that we had to do up there. And you would vote them down, you'd say it's not dense enough. And you would convince the rest of us that, yes, the infrastructure will be there.
So just a point of information, one ninety-seven A plans-
They don't know?
Well-
Some of them do, some of them don't.
One ninety-seven A is a section of the, the city charter that, that allows communities to offer a plan for their neighborhoods, which then are reviewed by city planning, and if adopted, can become law. One ninety-seven C is what we call U L R.
But the successful plans are the ones that, again, worked within the framework, that the only tool we really have to help you out is zoning. I think what one ninety-sevens did is it brought communities together, including the one where we sit, to talk about, you know, how many trees do you want? Where should the school be? Where should the park be? But then when they went to city planning, there were very, there was very little they could do to effectuate anything but the zoning.
So none have been done for twelve years?
I know.
Why is that?
I'd like to know that myself.
I think because they've been ineffective. Because it sounds like you can do a plan, but you can't really do a plan. Because you can't, at city planning, you can't adopt a plan and hold other agencies to it. D O T's not gonna care, E D C's not gonna care. Again, it may be a tool for advocacy, but you can't move a plan through and have it, have the force of law unless it's zoning. And what ends up happening is communities are sort of trained to zone. And to zone, you don't need a one ninety-seven A.
It's advisory, I mean, never was.
Yeah.
Where it worked well is where it gave the community a sense of what its vision was and how they could begin to fight for it. In Sunset Park, the community has put together now an alternative to Industry City's plan. And it is now mobilizing the community in what will be a fight tomorrow, I guess, before the City Planning Commission, on whether the community's grid plan, which is a green resiliency industrial development strategy, versus what Industry City wants, which is to primarily continue its trend towards, and here's my bias, towards retail, as opposed to, towards jobs that benefit the folks who live in the adjoining area. So the grid plan is not a one ninety-seven A plan, but it has been put together by a women's collective working with the community that really started looking at what is the potential for this area? What is really the challenges given climate change and sea level rise? How do you take an area that we know in fifteen years will be, twenty-six percent will be underwater, and adjoins a highway that needs to be reconstructed? How do you take that area and turn it away from functioning as a manufacturing and industrial zone? And so, those issues, I think, will come to the fore. But it's because people are now not filing the one ninety-seven A process, but they're using that local initiative effort to organize.
And, and a little closer to home, West Harlem did a one ninety-seven A. And one of the first things that was done by the planners who came forage New Manhattanville is take a look at that one ninety-seven A and say, we're not gonna do anything that does violence to it. We're gonna support the park by the waterfront, we're gonna support the idea of the through streets. So that one ninety-seven A, because it was a developer that wasn't gonna go anywhere, we were gonna be here, so we just will not make enemies. That one ninety-seven A was a blueprint for what the community wanted. I don't think it went to city plan. So Mitch, Mitch Silver was the-
It takes resources to do this, and, and places like Columbia, your master's studios could be doing one ninety-seven A head to kazoo, which would be useful.
Well, we had the Urban Technical Assistance Program, which was, you know, part of G S A P, part of the urban planning program, that actually sponsored community groups to do one ninety-seven A plans.
Is it still doing it?
No.
What happened?
It, it lost its funding.
Funded.
Oh, it's all about money.
It's America.
So, so just a question about, we saw the list of sort of accomplishments that, that this planning commission did. What were your biggest regrets about the time on planning? What projects did you push or want to have pushed that didn't actually succeed? And have they succeeded since?
Well, there were details of big projects that we wanted. Let's take Riverside Sound. That was, what, twenty-three acres or whatever? And one of the things that we wanted to happen was the highway to be suppressed underground to make this giant park. Unfortunately, at the time this project came forward, the state had just invested in the, in the elevated highway. And it's still there. I think we all thought, well, maybe forty years it'll come down and we can hit that underground highway and that park could then be done. So I think that, there were things like that. I actually would like to talk a little bit about big infrastructure projects like the third water tunnel. That was really exciting. Now that was, we know too much about that, we sure learned about it very quickly. It's built, beginning to be built, there's a question up there. Oh, the third water tunnel.
I, I came into, I moved from architecture to planning to do a plan for Harlem. That was my, that was my mission. And when I joined the city planning department, and then when I went to work for the borough president, who was an African-American borough president, and then when I went on the commission, the, there was a sense that, I was born here, we didn't know where the community was going. And not that I could have foreseen where we are now. Where I go into a restaurant and I'm the only one that looks like me in the restaurant. I knew that it wasn't, it wasn't directed towards a future that would benefit everyone in the community. And one of my disappointments, and again, one of the reasons I work in other places, is that there didn't seem to be a vehicle in city government to do that. That the mission was scattered over many agencies, that the eight-year term of any borough president or mayor was too short to effectuate that kind of thing. And so, it's a generalized disappointment that there still isn't that kind of vehicle in city.
I'd like to add only one regret. This is, I've never discussed with these people, because one of the things we have, we, one of the things we have enjoyed is the great friendship with each other. And I was appointed by mayor as the Asian representative, and so I had, I was able to bring in the issue of Chinatown, the Flushing. But I think one of the regrets was that, with the one ninety-seven, the planning was basically for very mature, well-established community board. For the immigrants who came in, they were not able to use the resources. So I wish at the time that the city planning department has its own small internal planning units who can assist, such as Flushing, which I understand is, you know, has been booming since I left New York City, and I left New York City twenty-five years ago. So, so by, by the time that, you know, we were looking at the College Point, the industrial area, to see if that can be put into new use, but it, I think one of the exemplary budget we saw was the Flushing wastewater treatment plant, which now is a beautiful structure at the park. But had, we had the board resources within the city planning department to guide these new immigrants coming into New York City, I think would be better serving the community. Because when I come back to Flushing now, even I changed a lot of zonings, but I really feel chaotic. And I feel like coming back from now, like coming back from China to Flushing is like coming back to a third world country. You know, which is amazing, you know, how slow the whole thing. In fact, I come back to New York, I said the whole New York is backward. Oh, we talked about that another day. Why the planning has failed, well, I was able to, you know, Bill and I came to China for the first time in nineteen ninety-one. And he was the one, he said, I'll come back, he never did, I did. I went back permanently, and my parents never thought I was gonna be migrating back to China, because it took my father a long time to get out of China. But we're thriving, and I think what we have learned is, take part, I also translated the whole U L R into Chinese, and I was able to teach-
Oh, God.
What to avoid, what to pay. And I think we are doing very well.
James, can we get a copy of that?
The Chinese copy, yes, yeah, I was sending a copy, yeah. I also wrote a Chinese, I think we should work on, you know, a straight talk about Chinese planning, which was published, I wrote that with Jenny Strong. Unfortunately, we read other copies, I think I was able to bring one copy and it just disappeared.
James, one of my colleagues at Pratt, the successor to me at the Pratt Center, actually worked with the Asian community out in Flushing, and recently made headway with basement apartments.
That was later, that was later. But I was saying, at the time, the question going to doctors, what do we get? I was just saying this, was had we had that time, because we had such great staff, they were so accommodating, and I think also the new charter, it's a brand-new chapter. So there was no any kind of pre-existing individuals who hold seniority over the other people. So we're able to discuss a lot of issues grown, grown up, without pretext of we gotta do this, well, we've been working on this for years. So we are able to establish that base. And I think one of the things I missed the most is the, 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 the chemistry between the thirteen commissioners. We're very, very, I mean, we had a lot of fun, we often joked, we have more than laughed than any other community hearings.
You never mentioned the sex hearings.
Oh, and that was one of the things I dissented on, I was for, for it.
What was?
That the-
The sex zones.
It was the-
Oh, the sex zone, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Edward Gaskin and I dissented.
Everybody needs to hear about that.
Maybe, maybe they have questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, maybe this is a good time, actually, to ask if there are questions for our panelists here. So we'll open it up to the floor. Pernam was executive director of the Department of City Planning, just so you know.
She hasn't changed much.
I think, I, a couple of you sort of were here in the planning profession when we had the board estimate and then went on to the commission as well. The, sort of, one of the things that we heard about the change, sort of, in the nineteen eighty-nine charter was that the planning process prior to that was highly politicized. And that it could be held up by like a single person from a single forum. And my experience, since I've been sort of here with the planning commission, particularly has been that the commission has always been a very thoughtful and a very professional body. And not that people didn't represent their, sort of, the people who appointed them, but as some of you have alluded to, there was sort of, it wasn't a process that was perceived as being sort of political and going with the wind, whichever way the wind was going. And I wonder if, if that in fact there is truth to that, what do you guys think about that? And then, as a, as a question to that, which is that ultimately the process does end at a very political place, the council.
Well, that was gonna be my answer.
So-
It's just flipped. It used to be that the politics came at the beginning. So that if you, if you had a borough president that had a good planning staff, was able to negotiate with the developer, was really open to the community, you probably got as good a deal as you're going to get. The Planning Commission at the time was sort of irrelevant. They, it was, they're, we looked to their opinions to make sure we weren't too far in one direction or another, to make sure we weren't gonna get sued, to understand the zoning. But that was where the deals were struck, and the borough president of, let's say, Brooklyn, if that person, he or she, liked a development moving forward, the other borough presidents, with, with some exceptions, would go along. Now that's the case at the end of the process with the council. The council also has that gentle persons agreement. So if a council, a councilman, a councilwoman from a certain district doesn't like the de Blasio plan for X Y Z, the other council members in a political, and not necessarily nefarious political politics of the way we run the country, will say, okay, we'll go along with you, again, except for a, a few exceptions. So you're not gonna wring, in my view, politics out of the, out of the system. I think the difference was, and, you know, being self-aggrandizing a little bit, was the quality of the commission, of the commissioners, and the fact that for the first time- commissioners could stop a project. And because we had the power to stop it, we didn't have to stop it. Uh, because developers would then come and say, we, we already have a lot of money in this project. How can we shape it? Or there'd be a, there'd be a public hearing. And we'd say, look, the people don't like it. What are you gonna do?
But even more importantly, we were able to discuss it. We were able to ask questions. We debated as a group in front of a public audience, as opposed to what I think has taken place in, in subsequent years, where it is much more rigidly controlled by the chair.
Yeah.
What Maxine referred to actually has a name in planning. It's called, um, aldermanic, um, privilege. So, um, it's a common thing to have happen on, on planning commissions.
And I've worked in maybe ten cities and it's, you know, whether it's an alderman or whether it's a council or whether it's a group of people in somebody's living room, uh, I've never seen a, a, a process without it.
But to, to Ron's point, I mean, I think my question really was, was this flipping of the sort of, um, the political deal-making leading to better plans and better projects at the end of it?
Yes, but I, I disagree a little bit. I, I think, I mean, discussing was important, but I think it was, um, I really believe in the, in the title of the panel. I think it was the fact that the, the planning commission had power. We had power to stop something.
I'd say that, you know.
I, I don't disagree with that.
The commissioners knew the game too. Every step of the way, they had to give something. So at the community board, they'd give something, the borough president's office had to give something, give something to the planning commission. And this power being to stop it was terrific. And then as a commission, we really did work hard to get consensus on the decision so that the city council wouldn't screw around with it.
Exactly.
And, and that was the leadership of, that was Richard Chait, who really insisted.
But one of the things that hampered the planning staff is that unlike what James wanted, you didn't have that amount of manpower or wooden power. The number of planners in New York City, for the population of New York City, is dismally low. And we need to expand the, the belief in community planning by really putting out community planners. You can actually work by community boards, or like certain cities in the United States. You could actually generate much more planning work. We worked with one of your students, Jocelyn Chait, who led the planning effort in Williamsburg for the one ninety-seven A. We did it in, in the Greenpoint area. We worked jointly together, but because Williamsburg and Greenpoint didn't talk to each other, we separated out the planning within that community board and came forth with a very good set of recommendations for the one ninety-seven A plan. Unfortunately, it was distorted later on by the zoning and you've gotten some of the overdevelopment there. But I, I must say, it's still better than not having had a plan. And so some of the areas were preserved. The industrial zone along, uh, the, uh, uh, the creek, Newtown Creek, is now being studied and is, is thriving. And so it, there are some elements of that plan that have survived. But some of it has really been too large-scale development. And so sometimes we overdevelop as well as underdevelop. And we have to make sure we come to a reasonable balance.
That's exactly right. Heaven, do you have a question?
Um, yeah, I, I kind of wondered, uh, with the most recent developments in the Lenox Terrace rezoning, if the ability for a community or the city council, the planning commission to have influence to be able to stop a project, then is the new Lenox, what's happened with Lenox Terrace, that a success of that change? Or something that we need to rethink about in some ways? So for this Lenox Terrace example, it's, there is enough political pressure to stop the project from going forward with the rezoning.
Yeah, I think the councilman's against it, isn't, isn't the council against it? Is the councilman from the district against it?
Right, but I'm saying, so I'm saying that now the default is that the, as a bright project moves forward, that you have the community input and benefits that we're kind of in this middle, middle ground.
That's the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I think that is the answer. That's the zoning ordinance, yeah. Yeah, Bernard.
Um, just a quick note that Valerie Stoll and I and Elliot Star, who published a book that just came out last month called zoning, a guide to twenty percent planning. For those of you who just heard this, that's, that's the reason I was telling you, it's cynical. But how can we start to engage with these tools as planning and to connect them or use them as they are planning explicitly, analyzing politics, understanding the institutionality of all? Coming back to kind of institutions, I'm wondering collectively, what a stirring moment to have you all here looking back at twenty years. What are the types of things that you remember doing as a group, intentionally or unintentionally, to shape the values of the decisions that you tried to put in place for the processes? Just kind of thinking about how, what, and what of those decisions have you seen endure, um, over the last twenty years?
Access to the waterfront, I think is.
The rules of the game and ways that the decisions in relation to that.
Actually more aligned than.
The types of planning.
I think starting everybody on the same page is a very important process. Like the, they said, the old man, the mentality, meaning kind of existing, so equal. I think the moment we enjoy the most is we are able to talk equally. There's nobody there to say, I know this issue more than the other people. We're able to discuss the issue, uh, really evaluate the merits and give, you know, give, give our decision yes or no on the decision. I, I hardly have any, well, among the years, we never had a contentious vote.
Well, we were just whispering, uh, here.
We were, like, just, we were very friendly. That's really important.
I think the public realm, the public realm.
Yeah, that we, we, um, despite what you hear, uh, uh, about slightly different points of view, uh, we've really had a pretty similar baseline view. You know, we wanted viewpoints. We, we wanted waterfront accessed, uh, uh, by the public to waterfront. A lot of the sort of liberal, progressive, lefty planning stuff, um, there was no argument. We just sort of looked at each other and said, well, of course, uh, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna.
Protecting the public realm, they're just by the public.
Um, and, and, um, you know, that formed, uh, the basis, I think, of the.
Remember the curb cut, didn't you?
Yes, I do, I remember the curb cut. Though I lost on the, on the, uh, fire trucks, I don't remember.
With the streets.
That was the one I, uh, I dissented on.
We were, we were criticized because we spent a good deal of time, um, saying that certain brownstones could not have curb cuts. And, um, the reason was that all these curb cuts that were being petitioned for interrupted the sidewalk. I mean, if you want walk, this is what I mean by the protection of the value, was the protection of the public realm. And what is the public realm? It's your sidewalks, it's your streets, it's your waterfront, it's, uh, the spaces that are given through zoning variances, if you give special permits and so forth. And so we've spent a lot of time making sure that the public realm was really public.
Right.
And that was an important issue.
Yes, it was.
Yeah. When a commission worked on something, you should understand too, that the staff is then given the task of writing a fifty-page report on whatever they have passed down to us.
Well, you could have done it in one page.
Thanks so much for listening. It was really cool and interesting to see you all in practice and to actually have the time, um, to look back and see how these changes have really impacted the city in a way. So my question is, uh, sort of inspired by Professor, um, Schiffman's reflections on, um, the context of what you're working on, on the C P C. You mentioned that obviously we're working in a very different context now. So first of all, um, what do you all think about the fact that New York City now operates instead of in an imperative of coverage, in an imperative of growth? You brought up that we tend to think industry line. That's not always the case. There could be operations and, uh, and changes to that. My other question is, um, about the, kind of relatedly, the advent of zoning for, for dollars. So we've seen T E Rs take on sort of tremendous, uh, power among private developers in the city. And I'm struck by now a movement, um, at the Pratt Center now to talk about how, uh, we can actually zone for public benefit. I was in a meeting with someone in real estate development at the housing authority last week and they were saying, we'd love to do T E Rs, which are much more politically palatable than these sort of as-of-right or mayoral right option of infill. Constituents would like it more, tenants would like it more, it would save more money for us. But the existing zoning code, it's not legal. It's not legal to zone for dollars. And I was so struck by that because I see that as not zoning for dollars, but zoning for public benefit. Whereas for private developers, you can find these workarounds to, uh, to save money because public housing is on these lots that are not necessarily connected to adjacent housing centers. Anyways, all this to say is, what do you think of zoning for dollars versus zoning for public benefit? If there's a future to sort of re-appreciate that tool for more public extraction? And also, should we consistently be planning in this imperative for growth or should we think about other ways?
Here's where I, I really differ, even if it's the Pratt Center. And that is, we shouldn't be looking at zoning, but we should be looking at that development and that plan for that area and see what are the best tools to apply to that particular area. I could take you to public housing that has land that could be built on, but that land is better used to manage water that will be coming into those communities. So that, in that case, I would not want to see that zoning changed for dollars. There are other places where it may very well make sense. And in that context, you then develop and look at the tools you want to implement the plan. But what we have is zoning and we look at it and try to apply it to a fixed situation. And sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. And I think we have to be very careful and begin to look at, what do you really want to achieve in that development, rather than come in with the toolkit before you know which tools to use. The other point that I, I have to make is that we have an existential crisis in New York City. And that is that there are waterfront communities, I'm talking about the Rockaways, uh, parts of Red Hook, parts of Coney Island, that may very well be underwater within our lifetime and definitely within your children's lifetimes. And how do we take the thirty thousand people living in public housing in the Rockaways and find a place for them to live safely? Because we may have to think about retreating from certain communities. Where do we put the families? How do we address those issues? Some people want to build a wall, a barrier for thirty billion dollars. Maybe we need to invest five billion dollars in eradicating poverty. We've got to look at those issues and those issues have to be looked at today because we don't have time to implement the plans over a long period of time. And they have to be addressed soon. And nobody's doing that in the city.
But how many people believe in global warming in New York City? I mean, Donald Trump denied that.
Well, he, he's not a New Yorker.
On the Upper West Side, everybody agrees.
We know what it is. You know, I, I had, I was asked by the Office of Emergency Management to take folks from Washington around and from Hawaii around because they were too busy dealing with superstorm Sandy. I saw what it did in the Rockaways. I saw what it did, uh, in, uh, Seagate and, uh, on Coney Island. It ripped up concrete. You know, it ripped it up and moved it fifteen yards. And it is amazing to see that. And it's getting worse. And we don't, and what we're doing is we're investing in housing in areas we shouldn't allow that housing to be built. So we've got to start thinking about it in ways that we haven't before. And that's a generational issue that your generation of planners have to address. How do we make sure there's no disconnect between our planning and development activities and the long-term survival of some of our communities? And I think we need to start looking at, not quantitative development, but how we deal with the quality of the city. And I think those.
But I think you need to prepare yourself by understanding the power of zoning. And that is the tool. And how much, I guess you're too young here, right? But you, you really need to see what just changing a few words can do or changing a district can do to understand that at the bottom, it's money. Land use is money.
Hello, Owen Fogg wants, uh, Unfurl Chinatown. So the main issue is the city jail. That's relying on the community. Uh, a year before that, uh, in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen eighty-nine, I was part of the internship of Pratt. And that was the first time I was, uh, exposed to this democratic and community planning. And out of that, uh, experience, I was able to write a full bright proposal to study the new town in Hong Kong by being a resident and evaluating. So as a result, you know, I was able to, uh, and do research. I'm not a practitioner, but I am in Chinatown, involved in the community. And someone asked me to see if I could lead conducting a research on a master plan of Chinatown. In light of this current situation. So I wanted some discussion. Master plan, is that somewhat outdated? Should it be changed to Mr. Plan?
Well, I mean, that's a good question in terms, yeah.
And is there, is there possibility I have a plan that, that would help resolve some of the issue of conflict among the various groups? So that is asked if I could, if I could start off the ship, is I do see if we could.
So two things. One, um, the last comprehensive master plan in New York City was the nineteen sixty-nine master plan. And the city government doesn't really do master planning anymore. There was, as part of the Chinatown Working Group, um, that whole nine-year, um, effort. Pratt actually, well Pratt actually did a, um, a plan, fairly contentious, but, but it was in fact a master plan for Chinese, for the Chinese groups in Chinatown and on the Lower East Side, different ethnic groups that were part of one sort of, um, population. And so that does exist. The city, city planning in particular turned down that plan as a, as a zoning plan. So, so there has been an effort, a fairly recent effort, that actually tried to do that. But you're right. I mean, there, there was the nineteen seventy-six bicentennial plan for Chinatown done by city planning. But that was the last city planning-directed Chinatown plan.
And in many cities now, that it, they're not, they're not calling it a comp plan or a comprehensive plan. They're calling it a, a, a comp plan process.
Right.
So, uh, especially now that we have access to media, uh, one is able to, um, tweak plans sort of on the go so that if communities expand or if populations expand or if a large number of schoolchildren come into a community, one can, um, online tweak the plan. A whole community can see the plan. And in some communities, you even have plan approval, uh, online. And that's different than the old, uh, master plan or comp plan that.
It's situations that people are longing for some authority to step in and stop all the fighting.
Well. That's not, that's not gonna happen.
That's a little beyond the scope of this week planning.
Uh, the mayor's office has taken over the planning function. We had Plan Y C and one.
That's right.
Yeah.
So that, the plan that we're talking about is now moved to the mayor's office.
Except e- even the mayor doesn't seem to be able to control, uh, and I'm not talking about any particular mayor. But isn't, doesn't seem to be able to control, uh, the act, necessarily the actions of their agencies or the actions of the, uh, council members whose districts these plans are operating in. Even if you have a negotiation beforehand, and we've seen, uh, a couple of instances in the upper Manhattan area, even if you cut the deal beforehand, um, when folks come out on the streets and say no, often the councilman says, oh, I didn't realize, uh, that this was going to be the, um, the effect. So I still think a entity like city planning, that's a buffer from the mayor. So it's not the mayor's plan. So the mayor can, uh, step away from that, uh, can intervene when necessary, is probably the better way to go. And I, and, and I've got to say, even though I think zoning is a tool that everybody should understand and know how to use, you all are young people. You are supposed to be the advocates and the fighters. So if you believe that we should have planning and not just zoning, I would say, don't settle for zoning instead of planning. Doesn't mean in the interim, you can't work that zoning thing. But, um, if not you, who?
But you've got to change the law.
That's right.
There's no law that calls for.
Can I answer on Chinatown issue? Can I answer on Chinatown issue? I mean, I'm, you know, being Chinese-American, right? Chinatown is always a very special place. And I think, looking at the past, when I was appointed to the planning commission, it was a very weak political entity. I don't know if it is still weak. I just learned about the prison, uh, issue a few days ago from my other friend, Steve Valentine, which I thought was, from a planning point of view, is ridiculous, trying to get Rikers Island, uh, make it to four jails in different, uh, thing. But I think for Chinatown, my suggestion, which may be bold, may not be agreed by the other people, is the planning process in New York, it's always the vocal voice gets the, is a squeezing will gets the grease. So I think the Chinatown people need to really, has a lot of noise. And you really, you, you also need to think about Chinatown being a district, whether it been, been an ethic, uh, the, the area. You know, I mean, the, the, you know, and the other thing is, I think doing a comprehensive Chinatown plan is very important. At the time, Ginny and I were doing this, we're using county college resources. And I think the mayor Dickinson, no, I cannot appropriate any funding for that study. So we had to do it with the private school thing. It has never been found, I think, you should look at what we have done before, with that thirty years ago, and maybe rallied together some not-for-profit, uh, money to put that thing together. Would be happy to help. We're just a form of, I'm a people nation, hoping to, uh, have a higher level of exchanges. But I think, uh, that's what I'm doing now. Is also empowering the, the minorities within New York City. But after we had the long distance.
Okay, so we're ending right on time. I just, um, want to thank our distinguished panelists for, uh, for coming.